Hi.
We have everybody Lucy?
Yes, I think we're ready to go whenever you are mayor.
Alright, thank you. Okay, well hello everyone and welcome to the May 19th 2021 Los Banas City Council Meeting. In our virtual format, temporary public comment can be sent via email to cityclerk@losbanas.org. Must reach the city clerk by 4pm of the day of the meeting and it's limited to 250 words. You may also leave a hard copy either in the city box or in the mail at 520 J Street. And so with that, we will move to our invocation which will be given by Captain Jennifer Cortez of the Salvation Army. Captain?
Yes, thank you for inviting me at this time. We are going to invoke it and ask God for blessing. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you on this afternoon gathering together in one spirit, in one mind. And we ask you Lord to guide us today, guide you know the city council members, the mayor of the city, and all those one who collaborate to put this meeting together. We ask you Lord that everything that we are going to talk or they are going to talk, oh Lord, that is going to be under your supervision and your guidance. We ask you Lord in the name of Jesus to give us wisdom and to give the wisdom to all those one who are going to be in this meeting. We ask you Lord to bless them and to give you know the direction, the right direction to help you know the community to be in one according with you. Bless them oh Lord, everything that is going to be talked, that you are going to be in the midst of this conversation and this discussion that is going to be part for everyone to be blessed. We ask you Lord in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Captain Cortez. Now we will call the meeting to order and we will ask Acting Police Chief Headen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chief Headen. We will now go to roll call. Ms. Maloney?
Yes.
President?
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Lamis?
Here.
Aria?
Here.
We have a quorum. Now we will move to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. Make a motion to accept the consideration of approval agenda.
Thank you Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones will second up.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, seconded by Councilmember Jones to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously, agenda has been approved. We'll move on to presentations. The first one tonight is a proclamation recognizing retirement, Ms. Kim Ferrera. See she's on with us tonight. And I will read it. Whereas Kim Ferrera attended Turlock High School and received the designation of valedictorian, she was active in Bayonne playing the French horn in both high school and college. And whereas in 1982, Kim Ferrera graduated as magna cum laude from Fresno State University. And whereas Kim Ferrera began her teaching career in 1982 at Bryant Middle School in Dust Palace, where she taught sixth grade for three years. She then came to Los Banas and taught fifth grade at Westside Union Intermediate School and Los Banas Elementary School. Majority of her teaching years were spent at LBE. Whereas Kim Ferrera was in the Los Banas Teachers Association bargaining team for 16 years and has been a building representative for many more. And whereas Kim Ferrera was active in the American Association of University Women and Delta Kappa Gamma, a professional society for women educators. And whereas Kim Ferrera has always been very active in her children's education and all of their activities both at school and out of school. And her love for animals is also a big part of her life. And whereas Kim Ferrera has dedicated 36 years to the Los Banas Unified School District and has made a mark on the lives of all she has taught and worked with. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of Los Banas do hereby recognize Kim Ferrera for the dedication and commitment she has given to the Los Banas Unified School District and to the community as a whole. We congratulate her on her retirement and wish her luck in her future endeavors. I want to congratulate you personally Kim. You and I started here the same year.
Yes, we did.
We've seen a lot through the years.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very, very much mayor and I just want to say I would do it all again. It's the best profession on the earth.
Yes.
Thank you everyone, thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
We will, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Now we will move to a proclamation recognizing National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 9th to be dedicated as National Police Week and May 15th of each year to be Police Officers Memorial Day. And whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the war against crime and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas new names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families and US flags should be flown at half staff each year on this day. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through 15th 2021 as Police Week in the city of Los Banas and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And for that, we present to Acting Police Chief Headen.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I thank you and I have with us here today on screen Detective Serena Gonzalez. She is the officer in charge of our investigations division. She works right under the sergeant there. She's doing a great job and I thought it would be fitting to have her come on and accept this proclamation on behalf of the police officers.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Free, I thank you on behalf of the Los Banas Police Officer Association. We will continue to work hard and for this community and we appreciate everything that you guys do for us as well.
Thank you very much for keeping this safe. I have a couple of family members who are law enforcement or retired law enforcement. I know what you guys go through, what you all go through. And we very much appreciate those challenges and you're always there to protect us.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And stay safe. And our last presentation today is a series of certificates of recognition. The first book is going to go and they're going to look like this. Getting them out, I'm delivering them and I'm not offering them to see if I have cameras. I can make sure that we can see them, they look like this. Certificate of recognition, they will be going out to the individual students. Here we have the Westside Union Elementary School sixth graders. Do we have a representative from Westside here tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'm Aguir Dines, Assistant Principal at Westside Elementary and Ms. Tammy Schultz is here. She is the academic pentathlon coach.
Oh wonderful. Well, our certificate of recognition going to the students. Now we delivering those in person next week to the students, but we're also giving this. We have one for the school, sixth graders, first place overall in Merced County Academic Pentathlon. Congratulations, first place in the whole county. That's pretty impressive. And on these certificates, they read in recognition of your participation and achievements in the Merced County Academic Pentathlon. Then it has the award of each group. So we want to congratulate Westside.
Thank you. Thank you, we're very humbled and I just want to recognize Ms. Schultz, who is the coach for the academic pentathlon team. She has taken our Westside students for 10 years in a row now to first place with the Merced County Academic Pentathlon Team. So she works really hard with students, of course we have outstanding students, but an excellent coach and that's the reason why we continue to, you know, they continue to be successful with the academic pentathlon. So thank you Ms. Schultz. You know, you're the reason why our students have done such a great job, so we want to recognize you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words to Ms. Schultz?
I'm just very proud of our students and our staff. They support us just as much and you and the parents and our school board just have always really been behind us in the success and academic success of our students. So we appreciate that very much and thank you for that recognition.
You're very welcome, thank you for your hard work. 10 years is pretty impressive, thanks. And our next presentation will be for Creekside Junior High, seventh graders. They took third place overall in the Merced County Academic Pentathlon. And I saw Ms. Bartlett, Mrs. Bartlett here?
Yes, I'm here.
Now, would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say that I have very awesome kids this year. We had small teams, only six between seventh and eighth grade, but they worked hard and have represented Creekside Junior High well.
Thank you very much. And now we're announcing that Creekside eighth graders, they received sixth place overall in the Merced County Academic Pentathlon and you were in charge of them as well, Ms. Bartlett?
Yes, I coached both teams.
Wonderful.
And I know Ms. Moreno wanted to be here, but she got caught in another meeting.
Yes, and I think, I think we have a lot of meetings this time of year. Well, thank you very much, congratulations. I'm very pleased to be able to recognize children and parents and adults and teachers and everybody who works to make our schools and our children a success. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We enjoyed the opportunity of working with our kids.
Wonderful. And now we will move on to the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to 250 words or less, by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street or by mail to 520 J Street or by email to cityclerk@losbanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. Ms. Maloney, do we have any public forum comments?
Let me refresh my email and see if we've received any. We've received no comments.
Thank you very much. Having received no comments, we'll close the public forum and move to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Maloney, could you please read the consent agendas for us today?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 226735 through 226908 in the amount of $625,060.47. Third quarter investment report for 2020-2021 fiscal year. Minutes for the April 21st 2021 city council meeting. Minutes for the April 26th 2021 adjourned city council meeting. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you very much. I'll go through council to see if anyone wants to pull any items for discussion or vote. Mr. Jones?
I'm good mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
I'm good here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamis?
Nothing here, thank you Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamis here, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Tim Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamis to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Now we will move on to the fiscal year budget workshop and I'm going to, as we've, Finance Director Williams will be running this workshop and leading the workshop. Council, instead of, you know, when we have motion items, action items, they seem to work very well, my system of going through council. But in discussion items, I think the raised hand system will work better. And so Ms. Maloney is going to kind of keep an eye on the hand raising if I miss any. So as the discussion continues, if you please hit the raise hand button if you have a comment or a question in between so we can recognize you and answer any questions you may have. So at this point then I will turn it over to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening Mayor and council members. I do have a rather lengthy presentation for you tonight. I'm going to try to get through it as best I can, but because there is a lot of information, please, as the mayor said, feel free to interrupt me so we can talk about things at that point in time. So get my screen up so we can all see the presentation. Okay, so tonight we're here to discuss the 2021-2022 fiscal year and the proposed budget. So this is the budget that, you know, taking the council's priorities into consideration and what the department staff has that we're proposing to the council. Tonight we'll go over anything, if there's questions about additions, if there's something that you'd like to remove from the agenda, tonight's the night to do it, tonight's the night to discuss it and then we can make any of those changes and bring them back out later. So first thing I'd like to just go over is the budget workbook. So we do have a budget that we put together and I'm sure all of you are familiar with, but it looks like this and we put it together after we have the workshop, after we have the adoption of the budget. And that has a lot more detailed information. This is just intended to be a workbook. It starts off with the summary of fund balance, which includes the current fiscal year information. So when I say the current fiscal year, it's the year that we're working on, which would be the 2021-2022 fiscal year. That gives you the estimated beginning balance and it is an estimate because obviously we're not done with this year yet, so we're estimating where we're going to finish the year at. And then it includes all requested revenues for each fund, any transfer ends that we might have, requested expenditures for each fund, any transfers out that we may have, and then gets you an estimated ending balance. And the next page is talk about the general fund revenues. And that breaks down by several different columns. So the first column to the left, which I actually put this in the opposite order, is 2019 actuals. And so that's what happened for fiscal year 2019 and then actuals for 2020. And then it has adopted and estimated for 2021, the current fiscal year. The difference between those adopted is anything that we took to council, whether it was at budget time like this or anything we added throughout the year, what we've actually adopted. And then the estimated is where we think we're actually going to finish the year out. So you may see a large discrepancy in those numbers, especially in the general fund of revenues. Because if you remember when we started out last year, we weren't sure where the pandemic was going to take us. We were very, very conservative and come to find out we estimated rather low and we're doing better than we had anticipated, which is always good news when we're talking about general fund revenues. So when we're looking at tonight's workbook, we will be comparing estimated numbers to requested numbers. So 2021 estimated numbers and 2022 requested numbers. Throughout the, and then after the general fund revenues, we go into the departments. The departments are broken down exactly the same way that I just explained. First admin, so will be all of admin's budgets, so we will go through the general fund mostly, but there's also water sewers garbage for admin, there's capital improvements for admin and that goes throughout the budget for every single department. And then finally at the end of the year, or at the end of the book, there is a CIP summary of our five-year expenditure plan for that. You will also get a large book with more information when we do approve that information and get it out to staff. Okay, so budget requirements. We are required every year to have a, hold a public notice and a hearing, which this is not that. That will come at the end of June. We do workshops along the way, but the public notice is put in the newspaper and then the public hearing is held at the council meeting to adopt. We do have to adopt by June 30th. If we do not have a budget adopted by June 30th, then we have to cease all spending. Council may amend the budget anytime after its adoption. Appropriations lapse at the end of year, that means that any expenditures that are in this current fiscal year book, once June 30th comes, they have expired and we can no longer spend them. If something is a continuing project, then it has to be picked up in the new budget. The book ensures overspending and it ensures transparency with both the council, the staff, and the community. So we're going to dive right in to the general fund. So I do have the general fund broken out, when we, its expenditures, we have it broken out by general fund and then measure H, because measure H, even though it is a general fund revenue and a general fund expense, it does have its own expenditure plan, so we like to discuss it separate of the other general fund items. And so just so you know, revenues, we can start with the revenues, they're estimated of what we expect the income to come in as. Estimates are generally based on historical facts. This includes analyzing past trends and applying future forecasts. And we also do have a couple of consult groups that help us. One example is Muti Services and they help us with our sales tax, our sales tax specialists. They do this statewide for different communities and we rely on them for several years and they're usually relatively close to what they expect for us to happen. They do give us three approaches. One is extremely conservative, one is this is, this is the greatest thing that can happen to you and we always go with the one right in the middle, which is kind of where we usually land. So we'll use that to factor in our revenues as well. So taking a look at that, again we're going to compare estimates of the current year where we think we're going to finish to what we're proposing the new revenues to be. So sales tax revenue, we're anticipating to spend the year at 5.2 million and we're anticipating an increase of 5.6 million next fiscal year. That's an increase of $376,000. Measure H, sales tax, which we do like to separate out, 2.5 at the end of this year, which is right around where we expected. So taking a look at that, again, okay, um, we're going to compare estimates of the current year where we think we're going to finish to what we're proposing the new revenues to be. So sales tax revenue, um, we're anticipating it to spend the year at 5.2 million, and we're anticipating an increase of 5.6 million next fiscal year. Um, that's an increase of $376,000. Measure H, sales tax, which we do like to separate out, 2.5 at the end of this year, which is right around where we expected. I think we put 2.5 when we came in about $62,000 higher. We're anticipating 2.6 for next year, $128,000 increase. Property taxes, we are anticipating a slight increase of, um, a little over 2%. Um, 7.5 million at this year, 7.7 for next year. Other taxes, that includes items like documentary stamp, um, and, oh, I'm sorry, I did forget to mention what page we were on when I went through this. I do want to try to do that every time. Uh, revenues begin on, on page five, and they are broken up down into the categories that are listed here. Um, and so if you'd like to follow along. Licenses and permits, so that has to do with business licenses and all like residential permitting, housing permits, um, even things like a water heater. We did come in relatively high this year, where we anticipated 400 residential permits for this year to finish out it, and we're only estimating during about 300 next year, and that's why you see that decrease there of $900,000. Shared revenues, uh, those are things like federal grants, state grants. Um, it does include, uh, for the 2021 fiscal year care funding, it also includes, uh, strike team reimbursements. So when we send our firefighters out to help with the, um, the fire season and we're getting reimbursed for it, that money comes in there. And that's a big part of the decrease. Um, we have a decrease there because we are bringing in about 211,000 this year, and we're only budgeting 10,000 for next year. You know, we talk about this every year, but we're very conservative. We hope that there aren't any fires, and we hope that we don't, um, state doesn't need our services, so we just budget a small amount in, in anticipation of helping them. And then that.
Sonia, excuse me, we have a raised hand from Mayor Portman Lewis.
Oh, yes, Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had a question, and maybe I, I didn't hear Sonia say it, on other taxes, the, the decrease in income, what was that category again?
So the other taxes is the, the first, um, taxes, and we have, um, a slight decrease, and that is, let me just refresh my memory here. Oh, it's actually the documentary stamp tax. So anytime that a property is transferred, if a house sells and you transfer it, it's a recording of the title, we get a percentage of that, and we actually drop that, we usually estimate, um, anywhere from 125,000. We collected 209 this year, and we're dropping that just to a flat 200,000. So it's just lowering the estimate over what we, um, collected this year.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so back to shared revenues. So the decrease there is both, um, if you remember correctly, we received, uh, 517,000 for care funding. Of that 517,382 went into reimbursements in the general fund. We're, we're not anticipating receiving that, so you see part of that decrease due to that. And then also, as I mentioned, the fire strike team, we received 211,000 for reimbursement that year, this year, and we're not anticipating receiving that full amount, we're only anticipating $10,000. So you'll see that decrease, um, of 584,000 there. Charges for services, which are on page seven of your book, include booking fees, admin citations, um, we are in, we are anticipating a slight increase of 15,000 in that category. And then other revenues are the items that, um, aren't in any of these categories, which actually are fees and fines that I just mentioned. Um, interest and income, and then miscellaneous revenue, all combined together, we are showing a slight increase of $46,000, and we have an overall decrease for the year in revenues of $780,000. That is mostly because of the permit processing and then those shared revenues that I spoke of. But if you look at your budget book on page nine, we did anticipate that revenues will come in higher this year than we had originally expected. So although that seems not normal, we are, we estimated, we budgeted 21.1 million to come in, and we're estimating 22.2 million to come in. So that's 1.2 million over what we had estimated. So we're doing fairly well, we didn't need to be that conservative, and this, um, negative amount here shouldn't deflate anybody, we're, we're still in a very good position. So that being said, this is just a breakdown of how our revenues come in. And as you can see, the large two categories are sales tax and property tax. Together, those two items make up 75% of our revenues, which is obviously a large portion. So if we take a hit in either place, then the city is in, um, a bad situation. Other revenues are 6%, that's that last category that grouped those three items together. Charges for service are at 10%. Shared revenues come in so low, they're at 0%. Licenses and permits are at 6%, and other taxes are at 3%. Um, moving now to expenditures, this is just an overview before we get into department by department. This is an overview of the general fund expenditures by category. So instead of by department, it's by category, and the categories include personnel, supplies and services, capital outlay, debt services, contingency, and transfers, whether they're in or out. And as you can see, in 2021, personnel was 12.6 with the increases that we have, which would be PERS, health insurance, um, increases, that has increased by 1.7 million for, um, an increase of 14%. Supplies and services have went up by $763,000. Capital outlay, this is a big one for us. So we have that huge priority workshop that we talked about, all these projects that we wanted to do, and trying our best to get them in the budget. So we have increased this year our capital outlay in the general fund by 1.8 million dollars. That's a good thing, that's a positive thing, that's moving that we were able to fit a lot of those projects in there. Debt services, um, this number, you should always see it going down unless we issue more debt, but this is for an internal fund that we have, um, where it's almost paid off, so the payment for this current fiscal year was 5100, and for next year will be 3900. Um, and then contingency fund, that is a fund that we have for emergency purposes. We start that fund at $50,000 every year, and we use it if we have to, we, if we don't need it, then, um, we try not to spend it, but we're in, we're estimated spending 10,000 out of there this current year, and then 50 for next year. So overall expenditures, you'll see an increase of 26% in the budget. Oh, and this slide decided not to work anymore, so, um, that's not helpful. All this is showing you here is that large section is the personnel, the supplies and services is the light blue section, and then the, the middle section is the capital outlay, but I don't know why it's not coming across on there. So let's move on from that slide. So citywide increases, when we talk about citywide increases, we're, we're about to go into each department. Instead of talking about these increases in every single department, just going to give you an overview that these increases will hit each and every department. So we are, we, um, in 2021 have a 17.1 million dollar budget, and we are increasing our budget this year to 21.5 million dollars. Some of those increases include employee salaries and benefits, step increases, so step increases are at 5%. If an employee is, um, deserving of a merit increase and they're at step one, step two, step three, then they would receive a 5% increase, so all those are automatically built into the budget. There are health insurance increases for some of the bargaining groups, they haven't reached their cap. Uh, PERS increases are built into this as well. Um, we had about a 5, um, percent increase for both miscellaneous and, um, safety on the top tier. And then there's a minimum wage increase, so effective January 1st minimum wage increases to $15 an hour, and we do have some part-time positions that are still at that lower rate. So as of January, um, those increases would take effect immediately. Throughout the budget, there are increases to both electricity and gas, to liability insurance. Um, and then of course, like I mentioned before, this includes a large investment into capital projects and equipment needs. And then it does also include assigned end commitment. So just to touch on a couple of those, the priority projects before we get into the budget, um, all that, all the high priority projects that we discussed during the priority workshop have been included in the budget. There are some, um, middle tier and lower tier priorities that were included as well. Um, one example of the lower tier is the, uh, digital sign replacement. We knew that it, we were going to have to fix it eventually, but over the last couple of weeks, it's been having more and more technical difficulties. We do have people that advertise on that sign, we need to make it more functional and more uptime, not downtime, so we have decided to build that into the budget, even though it was a lower priority. So, uh, citywide records management system is in here, this is what we discussed about putting everybody on the same page, starting with the financial software and it all tying in together. Um, downtown strategic projects, there were several of them. The gateway signage is in here, the design for underground and street scape is in here, and then, um, replanting some of the downtown trees have been here as well. The digital sign replacement, the ongoing camera surveillance, a truck for animal control, fleet replacements for, uh, patrol vehicles, police and mobile records management, that is making the RIMS program, uh, mobile. There's a code enhancement vehicle, a license plate reader, um, the addition to Fire Station Two, uh, the finishing of the station security at Fire Station One and Two, SCBA replacement program for fire, and then fire and rescue equipment, an aerial boom truck, and a stump grinder. So we, we will, uh, touch on those again when we're in each of the departments. So on page 11 begins the general fund administration budget. And if you have any questions about specific line items, please stop me. I'm going to touch on the ones that stand out or have increased for one, for us or another. So our budget is increasing by $159,000. Um, a lot of that has to do with the redistricting. Uh, we do have an increase of professional circumstances for both the attorney and the demographer of, um, about $29,000, the share to the general fund. And then also we have the city manager recruitment in here, and 25% of that is another $7,500 to the general fund. The consulting services, um, for the lobbyists are also in here. And I know Mrs. Lewis wanted to speak on this, um, I'll get through the slide and then I'll, I'll have her touch on the lobbyist while we're here, but that is $27,400 contract, $16,900 of that is in the general fund in this budget. Um, something new to the budget this year under memberships and dues is the mayor conference membership for $3,000. We do have an increase to travel and training, and that's because we're hoping that we're going to start getting to do that again, that we're moving past some of the restrictions of COVID, and we'll be able to make some of the conferences up that we didn't get to do in the, in the prior year. And then the ERP system or that citywide financial system that we spoke of, there's 125,000 in here as part of the project for, um, for equipment needs. So Mrs. Lewis, if you'd like to touch on the consulting services now, I think this would be a good time.
Thank you, Sonia. Well, uh, we had a presentation, I think it was at our last meeting, and, um, what I wanted to recommend, and certainly I'd like to hear from the other council members on this, is to possibly, um, not fund this at this time, and, you know, I don't know if we can keep the money aside, but bring it back if at some particular time staff feels that it becomes necessary, or there's an appropriate organization that can handle this task in order that the city of Los Manos can benefit from it. Um, so that, that's my recommendation on this. So I'd just kind of like to hear from other council members to see what their thoughts are.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'll go ahead and go through the council and see what they think. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm on the fence about this, just because I'm a firm believer that if it costs us a dollar and we get $2 out of it, I'm all for keeping that going. So what I'd like to know is if there's a, a list of items, um, that we've gotten our money back out of, that we wouldn't have gotten without the, uh, lobbyist. And I know that fire station or that land for the future fire station was brought up before, but that was RDA property. I kind of feel like that was a given, that we'd get that anyway, so I don't know if that's, I don't totally believe that that was due to the lobbyist. So I'd like to see what other items, uh, that our lobbyists have, uh, gotten us over the years, to see if it's worthwhile to keep going for it.
Very good. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, I'm with, uh, Councilmember Jones. I'd like to see the list that we've had in the past from the lobbyist. Um, yeah, like I said, we're getting the bang for the buck, uh, for the lobbyist.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be inclined to, uh, not fund this for now. It's not saying that we wouldn't in the future, but I think that, uh, I'd be inclined to, to defer funding on this at this time.
Thank you. Well, uh. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I think, uh, if, if I wasn't clear what Councilmember Yamas said is what my thoughts were, is that I'm not saying do away with this 100%, but, um, to not fund it right now, but somehow or another, if the staff can just reserve that money aside, if they're able to find an, um, organization that can, uh, give us more for our money than what we've paid out, because, um, dollar for dollar, you may get a, a big pot of money one year and then nothing for a string of three or four years. To me, that's not a dollar for dollar, uh, bang for your buck. So, um, I, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of looking at exactly what they brought in for us, uh, not what they, not what the rumor is, but evidence of what they were able to bring in for us. But, you know, I'm not in, I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of, of a lobbyist, I'm just saying that, um, for what we've gotten over the past three or four years that we paid this organization, does not seem to have panned out and worked for Los Manos. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Williams, I, so far, and, uh, the, the $5 million for that fire station property, that's all I know of, that that lobbyist has brought us. Does, does staff know of any other, uh, monies or benefits they've brought us?
It looks like the city manager would like to speak on this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Yes, the, the project that, um, we're referring to with the, that legal advocacy group had to do with the direct allocation of $5 million from the state budget to the city of Los Manos for a fire emergency operations center, a training center. Um, and as I understand that process, uh, we engaged the advocacy group, the lobbyist, drove up to Sacramento, the fire chief and the city manager at the time did, met with them, they had scheduled the appointments with, uh, both the senator and the assembly member to discuss the topic. Uh, they did so, and then, uh, at a future point, that, that funding was allocated. That is the only funding that I'm aware of that we were allocated as a result of their efforts. Uh, but as you know, advocacy comes in a number of different forms. I hear the two options, I am totally, uh, I think staff is okay with going down either road, we can withhold the funding for a year. I think, uh, if I might suggest, um, leaving that funding allocated in the budget, uh, as you all, all are aware, the state has a fairly substantial surplus that we are all trying to, uh, get part of, um, all the municipalities and the counties, every agency that you can imagine, and the state is attempting to get some of that surplus dollar. And the tough part for us is being a small community, is that we can always advocate for ourselves in Sacramento, or in Sacramento, and be there when the timing is right to throw our name out there. We try, we email, communicate with our legislators, they're fantastic to us. But I would recommend gently that you consider keeping it in the budget at a future point when we decide that it's right to reach out to another lobbyist type organization. We would be happy to involve you more in the process. Um, I think there are, there is more that that, those types of individuals or those types of groups can do. those types of individuals or those types of groups can do to show you that they're working on your behalf. You might not get a dollar for dollar return, but then again, you might get a five for one dollar return. So but I think at the, at the moment, it's a, it's a, it's a valuable gamble to us to at least keep it handy in the event that we see the need arise and improve our, our chances of getting some of that state funding. Sorry, long-winded, but I'll take direction from council.
Thank you. So it seems like, look, council pretty much feels like, let's go ahead and set the money aside, let's check out the cost benefit on it. And then we'll see whether this lobbyist or maybe a different lobbyist would be a choice. And what was the total, Ms. Williams, that we're paying the lobbyist?
So the total for this year would be $27,400. It is split between the general fund and the three enterprise funds, so the amount to the general fund is $16,900.
Okay. So go ahead, Ms. Lewis, did you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, with that in mind, if I may, I, I would like to make a recommendation. I'll, I'll go on and make a recommendation that we keep the dollar amount in the budget, but that we not re-contract the agency that we had before. And that will give staff the opportunity to start looking for someone who's going to be more of an advocate for us. And you know, we'll, we'll work with that on a trial basis, one year at a time, and see how it goes. But I, you know, other than that, for the time that we have the contract and continue to pay it, I, I personally feel we should have gotten more out of it. And you know, one time shot of $5 million in one year, that was wonderful, but I'm not going to divide that money over the time that, that we had that organization. And based on the report that they gave us, I, I wasn't impressed with what they expected us to do as council members versus what we paid them to do. So that, that would be my recommendation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, if any of you, if, if that's good with everyone, we'll go ahead and put that into the recommendations. If council, if any council members would like to not go that route, then go ahead and let me know, let us know, and we'll discuss it a bit further. If that's good with everyone, if you want, I don't, then we'll just go ahead and move on. I don't see any hands raised? All right. So that sounds like a good, a reasonable recommendation. Sounds like a wise one. And Ms. Williams? I think we, we can go on to the next bit.
Okay, so moving on to community development, starting on page 51, this is community and economic development. The budget, this year's budget is anticipating finishing out at $688,353. And then next year's budget is proposed for $1.3 million, so $680,000 increase. Some of these items are due to technical services, which includes the master plan and the general plan. Economic development projects, we have a possible project that would cost $100,000 for an environmental impact report for a regional retailer. And then the usual retail recruitment is also budgeted in this line item. Building and structures include the downtown strategic plan projects that we discussed earlier, the gateway signage for $175,000. The design for underground for $36,000, and the design for the streetscape for downtown for $85,000. And then the miscellaneous equipment line item includes the $25,000 cost to replace the digital sign located on the corner of Ice Street and Reservoirs. Police annual budget for this year is 8.7 million and will be increasing to 10.4 million. Some of these increases include miscellaneous equipment, so it does include the annual camera system project. It includes uniformed crime reporting for $25,000. This is required that we update our system required by both the FBI and the Department of Justice. We are required to update our current RMS software to a UCR or Uniformed Crime Reporting Software. That's a national incident based reporting system. And so this is something that does actually need to get done. The annual vehicle replacement program, we discussed this during the priority workshop, we were able to include four vehicles at a cost of $55,000 each. That would make it $220,000. You'll see later in the presentation that we're, we're counting one-time expenditures. Those are large projects that we don't anticipate doing next year. So that takes away from our deficit. However, this is something that we want to be a continuous program, so we're not counting that as a one-time expenditure any longer. We want to be able to, to see the affordability and the budget for ongoing replacement of vehicles. And it will fluctuate anywhere from two to four vehicles, we, we anticipate at this time. Specialized equipment includes the IRons program. And computer equipment includes VMware, or basically what that is, is server replacement. So for all the projects that we're doing there, we do need to update the servers. Moving on to code enforcement, the budget is currently $424,000. We're asking for an increase to $562,000 for a $137,000 increase. Some of the differences here include protective gear. The commanders have made it clear that we need to outfit our code enforcement officers with bulletproof vests and other protective gear to ensure their safety. And then we did include an animal controlled vehicle here. We talked about that. Replacing that vehicle, that animal control truck, it's at a cost of approximately $75,000, which we have also included here in the budget. Moving on to fire, beginning on page 117 of your workbook. Try to get to that page as well, in case anybody has any questions. So fire includes the special programming for volunteer firefighters at $29,000 annually. It also includes underbuilding and structures upgrading.
Sonya, what page are you on?
I am on page 117 of your workbook.
And Ms. Williams, we have a hand from Mr. Lambert?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I, I just had a question on that. Is that the animal control truck itself, or is that with the box on the back?
That's with the box. That's everything, that the animal control needs to be functionable.
Okay, yes. All right, thank you.
So, so back to fire, and the Fire Station Two upgrade is in here, which includes upgrading the dorms at a cost of $200,000. And then finishing with station security, so making sure that our employees are safe and putting up the barriers and the locking doors and things like that for a cost of $35,000. Miscellaneous equipment includes replacing the gate controllers at the Fire Station for a cost of $6,000. And then specialized equipment, this falls along the lines of annual, our annual replacement as well. This is not something that we want to talk about on as a one-time expenditure. So the turnout site won't be replaced this year, will cost approximately $15,000. And other rescue equipment like fire hoses and such at a cost of about $5,000. So it does include those. Building is not too exciting here, so the building is actually a decrease, and the reason why...
Ms. Lewis? I mean, sorry, Ms. Williams. Ms. Lewis has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to go back to the Fire Department? Is it line item 10270, special programs? I, I guess if we can touch bases on where the volunteer firefighter funds are on this within the budget.
You are correct. Special programs, line item 100-270, is where the volunteer firefighters are funded out of. They do receive $29,000 annually, and we play, we pay that on a monthly basis.
Okay, so as it's been done over the years, the money has just been given to the Fire Department without verification of expenditures?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this time, I, I, you know, I, I think the chief probably has a recommendation for this department, but I would like to see this money possibly stay in the program for this year, but nothing be distributed until this program has been revamped. Because we, we, we've just given money away and, and the volunteers seem to be decreasing, and the possibility of it not being there at all may or may not be a reality. And so if that's the case, then this is $29,000 within the Fire Department budget that could be allocated somewhere else, or if it's coming out of the general fund, put it back into the general fund for redistribution. This is another area where I'd, I'd like to hear from the other council members, their thoughts. But I, I certainly am not in favor of just giving $29,000 without any verification of how that money's being spent from, from their budget.
All right. Let's go through council. Mr. Jones, have any ideas or recommendations on that?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Lewis couldn't have said it better. I think with the shape that the volunteer fire department is in, we need to have a little bit more control or need to know exactly where the money's being spent. So we just not giving it away without accountability on it. So I'm with Deborah on this one.
Very good. Mr. Lambert?
I myself too, Mr. Mayor. Accountability, and you know, once we get it revamped, I, I'm sure, you know, we can get it back allocated.
Very good. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, yeah, I would like to see what has been identified as the corporate or the deficiencies, and what, what's being proposed to fix those identified deficiencies. So yes, I agree with the, with the council members.
Okay, very good. So we'll, we'll put some, some controls on that money and not distribute it until we know, we have exactly how it's going to be done, and how it's going to be handled, and how it's going to be spent. Also, we've been talking about, you know, improving the, the overall volunteer system, modernizing it to, to meet the modern world, because in the old days, people had more time on their hands, we had more volunteers, and they had more free time. Now we have to find different ways, more creative ways, modernize it, so we can have a, a large volunteer force within the challenges within the barriers and the challenges that people have to face now. So, very good. So, Mr. Breezy?
Mr. Mayor, council members, just before we move on, I want to let you all have your opportunity to comment on this topic, but before we move on, I just want to make sure that we're clearing the pathway that you're setting forward with us. It's to be budgeted, just not spent for this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year?
No. If that's, if everyone agrees with that, that's good. If raise, raise your hand, let me know if you don't. So I see no hands raised, so that sounds like the plan, Chief. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. All right. Any, for the council comment or question on that item? All right, seeing none. Ms. Williams?
Moving on to building, as I was beginning to mention, the decrease here is directly related to the anticipated decrease in revenues. So as you know, we have a consulting firm, CSG, that currently does basically operate our building department, and we pay them based on the revenues that come in. So, excuse me. If we bring in less revenues, then we generate less expenditures to out to them. So because we are expecting 100 less permits than we do in the current fiscal year, we are expecting approximately $100,000 decrease in expenditures paid out to them. We have, when we do see this go back up, we have brought it on several different occasions to council for adjustments. So it is something that we continuously monitor. If we do need more funding here, that would be offset by the revenues, and we would ask for council to make those changes up. And then moving on to streets on page 147 of your workbook. Streets is exciting. This is a very expensive department, and it is a general fund department, but however, so far, we're very fortunate that we can actually charge this out to different departments, and that those departments include that you'll see here at the bottom, street rehabilitation, gas tax, and even solid waste. So we do have funding available in these various funds to allocate the total charges of streets at this time out to those various departments. If anything changes, then we would notify council right away and show them that the general fund would actually have to start picking up some of these anticipated costs. But moving off the budget, $2.2 million to finish out this year, and that's increasing by $760,000 for a $2.9 million budget for next fiscal year. That does include street rehabilitation. There are several different projects. I asked for a list today, and that was poor judgment, because I thought I would read it off to council, but it is extremely long, all of the different street rehab that they're doing throughout the city. So if anybody does want to see that, I'd be happy to email it to you. But it might take up most of my presentation if I start reading it now. And we are also replacing a three-quarter ton pickup truck in this budget for $60,000, and then specialized vehicle, which is a stick and form pickup truck for $80,000, and that's a truck for concrete repair, basically. We do also have specialized equipment in this budget, and that includes a backhoe for $165, a concrete grinder for $120,000, a portable air compressor for $30,000, a 240 chassis bed for $15,000, and a 240 demo bed for $15,000. And these are all items that are associated with the street rehabilitation. So moving on to engineering on page 151, a lot of this budget is outside engineering services, and they about $25,000. And then we also do have an in-house inspector that is paid out of this budget, and we are getting him some new equipment, including a laptop that is durable, so if he goes out to a job site, it's built to be at a job site, and if it gets dropped or hit by something, that it doesn't break. So that's a $2,000 increase. Recreation budget begins on page 181. This is exciting, and it looks like a relatively large increase, but it's actually not what you need to remember here, is that we didn't have any programs this year. We're not really anticipating finishing the year with any programs. We originally budgeted $750,000 last year for this budget, and we're increasing it to 809, but because of the pandemic, we weren't able to do those, and that's why it looks like it's such a large increase. But we're excited to say that we've already began rehiring the employees for the recreation department, so we can start reinstatement of those recreation programs and be ready to go July 1st. And then moving on to maintenance, which is page 191 in your budget. There are a lot of items in this budget, including the professional services agreement for Ronnie's Landscape. It's the regular agreement, however, this year does include the extension of the dock perpet will be included in that contract as well. Landscape and irrigation tree upgrades, so these are the trees that we talked about for downtown, we're anticipating spending approximately $20,000 on those trees. Building and structures, so we had some storm damage at the Miller and Lex building. We have some damage with the roof that happened during one of the storms. This actually is an insurance item, however, we do need to budget for it. We will, it will cost approximately $35,000 to repair the roof, and we are anticipating a reimbursement from the insurance company of $30,000. Park and playground equipment, that's another insurance item. The Catholic park equipment will need to be replaced. Vandal set that equipment on fire and melted the entire structure. So we are, it's going to cost us approximately $50,000 to replace that.
Thank you.
$50,000 to replace that equipment, and we should receive insurance proceeds of $25,626. We do have a larger deductible on perks, and that is $25,000. Equipment includes that stump grinder at $35,000 that we discussed, and then vehicles for the special.
Sonya, Deborah has a question, and so does Mr. Lambert. Okay?
Oh, Deborah here on mute.
Trying to get my cursor there, it's too fast. For the landscape services, what, what budget number item is that?
So they are included under professional services, which is on page 191. And it is right at the bottom of the page, 100-231. $156,045.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sonia, on the, the playground equipment, of course, I understand that this one's insured. But are we still looking into cost on the, the bark? I, I still have cost. I've kind of checked them myself and the rubber is almost comparable to the red bark. So are we, I just wanted to see if we're still getting quotes for the bark.
I'm not sure if Joe's on the call, I don't see him.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, Joe, put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, absolutely, council member. Thank you. So I have been looking into it, I have not found that. So if there's, if we can possibly touch base offline, the main differences is having to refresh those, those chips. So when you do wood chips, it's quite a bit, you have to go quite a bit farther down than the rubber ones, which of course means you're, you're using more chips. But it also means when you have that thinner layer with the rubber, it needs to be replaced. So some of those costs kind of don't work out in the long run in terms of replenishing that. But I'm, if you do have a, a company that has affordable prices, I'm, I'm open to it for sure.
I, I think I may be misunderstood. I'm, I'm talking about, Home Depot has the rubber chips over there. I'm talking about replacing the wood chips with rubber chips.
Oh, I understand. So, so the Home Depot, that rubber, those rubber chips there, those are not in compliance with what is allowed by the state in terms of playground chips. So playground chips have different requirements, flame retardantness, ADA. So those wood chips, when you're putting those down, that, that, that is ADA. So it's, it's a wood fiber that is certified with that.
So what is the longevity of the wood fire or the protection?
Um, probably 10 something years, but they usually, you know, degrade from other things before that, you know? It's, it's not something that really is going to go away, those, those, those wood chips. Even when you look at that Catholic park that just burned down, you look at it and the metal's starting to melt. And you look at the chips and they basically just have the char from just the outside. The actual chip itself is still, is still there. So it's gonna be, it's gonna take quite a bit for those chips to burn through versus non-compliant chips or rubber options.
So this is actually a state compliant?
Yeah, there's national and state standards for playgrounds. Each playground that we install, we have to have certified. Anytime we are replacing equipments, those sorts of things, we have to meet certifications. It's a little bit of a pain, but of course, it's for the purpose of safety. But that, every playground, even the playgrounds that you're going to buy at Home Depot, that's not going to be able to get certified at, if we were to put that into a public park. So there are just different levels of certification.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Specialized vehicle is the Ariel boom truck, which was one of the items in our priority workshop. I do actually have it in the budget at a cost of $200,000. But I believe it was Mr. Yamas who requested that we research, looking into a lease agreement versus purchasing it outright. In doing so, we did find out that the lease agreement is a bit more costly, but we did get a new estimate. So we can decrease this to $165,000. And that change will be reflected in the next budget meeting that we have. So that is a positive decrease that that will cost us $35,000 less than originally anticipated. And then we, you will see a charge out in this department at the bottom of the page. And what that is, is that's a charge out to the different lighting and landscape districts for personnel. So anytime that the employees are doing work in an LLD, we call them, we are able to charge out their services directly to that landscape and lighting district. And just to summarize, this is what the, how it looks like we spend the money. So if you take a look at the chart, 54% of the general fund budget is spent on police. And when I say that, that includes all of police, so dispatch and all their general administration staff as well. Fire is 12% of the budget. Code enforcement, let me just go from the top. Maintenance is 6% of the budget and that is for non-LLD parks. Recreation is 6% of the budget. Code enforcement is 3% of the budget. Engineering is 1%. Building is 5%. Admin is 7%. And community and economic development is 6%. So overall, public safety is 69% of the general fund budget. And this is very consistent with previous years. It's a little skewed this year only because recreation seems to have come in so much higher. But that's just because the numbers were low because of the pandemic. So balancing the budget, this is the important part. Do we have a balanced budget? The answer is yes. You can have a negative amount and still have a balanced budget. How do you do that? You use your reserves. And we are doing exactly that. But we did discuss using our reserves when we talked about the priority workshops. So the revenues that we are anticipating bringing in, as you can see, are $18,744,898. Less the expenditures of $19,046,849 leaves us a fiscal year deficit of $301,000. That means that we're spending $301,000 for more than we're bringing in. That's not a problem because as we mentioned before, we have what we're referring to as one-time costs. So our one-time costs are all those equipment needs that we're doing, all those downtown projects that we're doing. Those are one-time costs. Overall, one-time expenditures. Nope, that's the wrong page. Sorry about that. Overall, one-time projects, or all one-time projects throughout the whole entire budget are about $1.9 million. Ongoing projects, things that we would like to see reoccur, like the fleet program and safety equipment for the fire department. That is about $540,000, leaving us a one-time cost of $1.4 million. If we back that out of this deficit, then we have, we actually have a surplus of $1.1 million for the year. So we are still doing good. We, yes, we are this year eating into our general fund. But if we took out those projects just to ensure that we can function, we would have an operating surplus. So, so we are in a good position. We're not doing anything wrong. We're, we're spending that fund balance exactly how it is intended, which is to ensure equipment needs stay above par and that we fix our infrastructure as well. So we do have a balanced budget. Oh, that doesn't want to change. Okay, so moving on to general.
Sonia, did I miss the water park somewhere?
We haven't got that far.
Okay.
So it is, it's actually in the capital and so we'll get to it later in one of the slides. It's not in, it's not included in the general.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to general fund, measure H. Beginning on page 71 of your workbook, you will see general fund. So as you, so just so you know how you can tell the difference, we talked about having the different activity codes. So 100 is the fund that it's in. 290 is the actual, 290 or 291 because of dispatch is what we use for measure H. So you'll see, you'll see that number stand out here and I'm not on the right page. You see, instead of seeing 100-101 here, you'll see 290-101. And that's just referring, so you can see that it is measure H. So there are only slight increases to measure H. As you know, the funding is limited. We did anticipate that we would bring in $2.5 million for the year. Now, police receives 45% of that 2.5 million. And so we are anticipating to spend $900,000 this year and $1.1 million next year. Those increases are mostly due in part to what we talked about before, the salary retirement, if it increases. But also there is a license plate reader, a mobile license plate reader that is included in this budget, one of the items that was on our priority list. Dispatch receives 10% of the $2.5 million. And we talked a little bit about the, the IRMs project or the Making Rems mobile. And they are actually sharing this cost of measure H is sharing this cost with the general fund. They're both paying half, which is a cost of $30,500. We, this fund is in a good position. We do estimate ending the fund balance at $148,000 after we spend that year. And the reason why this is important is because measure H does sunset. It doesn't go on like measure P does. It's sunset after 10 years. And we do have to have those funds built up so we can continue to afford the personnel that's in there, even if temporarily while either the general fund absorbs it or we go back out to renew the measure. Moving on to code enforcement, they do receive 5% of the $2.5 million. They are on page 81 of your workbook. This is a slight increase of $59,000. There is an employee, a code enforcement employee that is paid out of here. So we would be paying their equipment needs for uniforms, the protective gear, the bulletproof vest that I spoke of before would be expensed out of here. And then also we did put in a code enforcement truck. So to replace the current vehicle that we have at a cost of $50,000. And that would outfit the truck completely with all the needs that, that the enforcement, the mobile display computers to do their jobs and anything else that they might need, lights or anything to outfit that truck. Fire is on page 121 of your workbook. They do receive 15% of the $2.5 million. Their budget is increasing by $74,000 this year. Specialized equipment in this account includes the SCBA annual replacement. That is a cost of $100,000. And then also they have CPR compression machines that will be paid out of this year's budget. And then recreation receives 20% of the budget. This is on page 185. And again, this looks like a relatively large increase. But again, it's due to the reinstatement of recreation programs that we were unable to do in the current fiscal year. Special programs, there is a laundry list of them. All the things that Joe would like to do include expansion of Arbor Day, ape hunt, Earth Day. I'm just naming a few. Christmas decorations, misting stations, spring youth soccer, adult soccer, adult softball, 49ers flag football for each programming, summer basketball, the list goes on. I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss all these programs with you. It does also include landscape for, for Ice Street and the Canal Trail at $20,000 for each project. It includes park and playground equipment for both Davis Park and Little Peach Park. And then the specialized equipment is for solar lighting at Big Peach Park, Davis, Catholic and Veterans Park. So these are, this is the benefit of having measure H, something that we've been able to do and expand our parks, make them more decorative, make them more feasible, things we wouldn't be allowed to do without measure H. So measure H, this is balancing the budget for measure H. Measure H is anticipated to bring in $2.6 million and to expend out $2.3 million for a surplus of $332,416. That surplus is assigned to the fund that it belongs to. So we do a very detailed ongoing calculation. If police has a surplus, then police gets that surplus. If dispatch has one, so on and so forth. So it doesn't just go into a pot that can be generally spent. That surplus is spent according to the expenditure plan that was adopted by council at the time that measure H was. And that money can't be used on anything else. So that being said, we are all done talking about the general fund. I will move on to special revenue funds unless anybody has any questions. Okay. So special revenue funds covers basically everything that's not an enterprise fund, not an internal revenue fund and not a general fund. It includes the things like measure P, capital improvement funds, sometimes grant funding if we get it, a variety of things. So we're not going to touch on all of them. Again, if you do have specific questions, please stop me. Or if you want to talk about this at a later date and go into a little bit more detail, I'd be happy to do that over Zoom or even in my office, I have no problem doing that. Again, if we talked about this budget book, I'm afraid that we might be here for three days if we went into detail of every single one. So we're just going to touch on the large funds and the ones that have the most activity. So measure P for police, as you know, measure P is a half cent sales tax that gets divided equally between police and fire. The beginning fund balance for the fiscal year 2022 is anticipated to be 5.3 million. We are anticipating bringing in 1.6 million in revenues and expending out 2 million. And that will leave us an ending fund balance of $5 million. Yes, we are overspending, but that's what this fund is built up for capital purposes. And you'll see that we're using that money to help build the police station. So permanent employees funded through measure P for police include three police officers, one community service officer, one crime analyst and one half admin clerk. The funding, there is $1.2 million set aside to help with the, the new police station. And then also there is money in there for mobile display computers, which go in the police vehicles, as you know. And $50,000 is generally allocated every year to either purchase new ones or replace and fix the ones that we already have. So this is a healthy fund. The $5 million will be used also to make those annual payments. So if you remember, the police station is going to cost several million dollars, but we're only financing, it costs $24 million, we're only financing for $14 million of that. The annual payments are approximately $700,000 a year. And those payments will be made directly out of the measure. And the fund is more than capable of making those payments at this time. So moving on to measure P, fire, their beginning fund balance is $590,000. Their revenues are coming in at 1.6 million. Their expenditures are going down at 1.2 million, which leaves us an ending fund balance of just over $965,000. The permanently funded positions in this department are three engineers, four firefighters and half of an admin. Buildings and structures, we are adding a burn room to the training tower. And that is at a cost of, it's on here. If I had the right page, it would be on here. I actually apologize, I don't have that cost listed here. We are also including equipment turnouts and MDCs on here. This training tower is actually the last thing that the fire department has on its expenditure list. So what that means is that we would have to create a new expenditure list, take that to the measure P committee, get their approval and then also get the approval of the city council to spend those expenditures coming in on different items because they have met all of their capital needs that is in the current expenditure program. So that's something we'll be looking for in the future so we can take that fund balance and continue to do positive things for the fire department. So police department capital improvement, this is on page 103. This is impact fees that come in. And the reason why we're showcasing this is because this fund is also used to help build the new police station. So we do have $1,250,000 also allocated in this year's budget to help with the design construction of the police station. And then the annex does need a little bit of work done for safety reasons. They're having problems over there with the stairs. So we put $5,000 in the budget to look at rebuilding the stairs. Mr. Lambert, this is where we talk about your splash pad design. So this is the Los Bannas Park Fund, it's a capital improvement fund. We have a beginning fund balance of $5.9 million. Revenues are anticipated to come in at. Revenues are anticipated to come in at one point seven million. Expenditures are anticipated at two point one million, leaving us a fund balance of five point four million at the end of the twenty-two fiscal year. Professional services include approximately thirty thousand dollars to design the restroom replacement at the export complex. It also includes a hundred thousand dollars to design the splash pad. The landscape and irrigation portion is two hundred and fifty-five or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's also for the export complex, and that goes along with per capita grants. And that is to recreate fills and to improve the landscape and irrigation on those fills. It would also be for filled netting and replace the signage and install additional trees on the outskirts of the property. Building and structures is for the scout pub to make it ADA compliant. We do have a tree grant that we anticipate coming in, and the expenditures for that would be sixty thousand dollars to replace the trees on different various parks. And then specialized equipment is for the Pacheco Park Splash Pad, and that right now is anticipating to cost us one point seven million dollars.
And Ms. Lewis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The grant that we're getting for the tree replacement in the parks, is there a expiration date on how quickly we have to use it? Or is it there until we use it?
I see that Joe has already popped up, so I'm going to go ahead and let him answer that question.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. So actually, that's the grant that we received for that urban forest management plan. There was about a hundred trees, actually exactly a hundred trees that we received from that, and we were able to plant those at five park locations, the rail trail, Meadowlands Two, Vineyards B, Crest Hills, Regency Lot B. So we did twenty at each of those parks. The rest of that grant is this urban forest management plan, which we're just kind of kicking off here this month, and then we roll in completing that probably next March. Probably we won't be able to bring that to council and have it completed. So we do have, as Sonia mentioned in other budgets, we do have some tree planting downtown along the Canal Trail and other budgets. But that particular grant is for that.
Okay, so the Canal Trail, I believe we heard that last year, and we only have a ten-year lease on that property. Are we going to expend money to replace trees, not knowing whether or not we're going to get that, another long-term lease with them again? And being that we have to return that property back to its original state if they do not renew our lease?
I think we just recently extended it. You know, I don't anticipate it being a situation that we would lose that property. I guess maybe it need to involve some legal advice as far as that goes. But to me, it's something worthwhile to invest in. I think it's one of the best assets that the city has or has partnered with in this case. The area that I'd like to focus on is that pioneer center stretch to I Street, where we have a lot of raywood ash that we've been losing and just filling in some gaps with some of the shade trees. And that's why, you know, I think we really felt like it was a very important project. But of course, any property that I guess is technically not the city's, you know, it's a good question to ask. But I do hope that we can continue to use that because I do think it's one of the most popular amenities in town.
Well, and I do know that that trail between Pioneer and West I Street is frequently used. I just had concerns that if we get the forestry grant and CCID does not want to renew the contract past the ten years, when in fact, our first contract was twenty-five years, that leaves, you know, a little bit of suspicion on my part as to whether or not in the future they are looking at wanting to continue the contract with the city. So I don't know, I guess maybe five years down the line, we can ask them if they're still interested in a long-term contract. And if we haven't expended all of that money. And again, I don't know if we have a period of time that we have to use this money that we've received from the urban forestry plan, or if it's just until we complete planting all the trees based on the numbers that had come, that they had come up with of trees that needed to be replaced.
Yeah, so the funding is from the grant is actually for that plan. We've already completed the planting of the trees portion of it at the five park locations. So the rest is just the document. We've completed the tree inventory part, and that'll go hand in hand with that document. We technically have, I think it's out March of twenty-four to complete that plan. But I'd like to see if we can, you know, get it here this fiscal year and get it moving forward and completed. The funding for the Canal Trail trees is going back to measure H, just a few minutes ago, talking about that item. So that's where that funding is coming from for that particular item.
So do those trees specifically have to be in parks based on that grant?
They needed to be public trees, and we needed kind of large areas to be able to plant a good number of trees. It was kind of a challenge to say, okay, let's find an area that we need, you know, twenty-plus trees. And I understand areas like downtown, but there's a little bit more to to that, that would have had expenses that wouldn't have been eligible with that. But CalFire does offer regular tree planting grants. And part of the reason why I want to get the urban forest management plan done as quickly as possible is because it helps us be more eligible for those tree planting grants. One thing that CalFire likes to see from cities, they want you to have a plan. They want you to have put thought towards your street canopy in your city in order for them to feel confidence to give you those grants in the future. And so talking with our regional representative from CalFire, that was the direction that he had let me know was something that would be the most valuable to us long-term. And so that's what the reason why, one of the big reasons why we went that route with the grants. And, you know, to me, hunter trees is awesome. I hope in the future we can have a lot more than that. And to get those grants, we need to have that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Lambert has a question, has a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Heim, I'm just going to bring up the Splash Park one more time. I know we agreed on Pacheco Park at the time. Was the community center ever an option? You know, if we're going to start bringing back, you know, youth programs, I mean, it's something that we could have considered?
Certainly, I think it's been in, you know, a lot of people's minds, including mine. But there are some issues with the community center area, which is primary, the soil along the rail trail. My understanding of it, and some of it gets into legal, is that it's just not been cleaned up to the point where it's financially viable to construct something that would bring in family and kids. I believe it's owned commercially, so I'm not up to the legal definitions on these items. But my understanding is that can be a financial challenge. Another issue, of course, is that it's not yet our property, not yet the city's property. Hopefully, that comes together. But it's certainly something that I think multiple people that I've talked to, including myself, have, you know, bounced around and understood. Maybe the value of bringing activity downtown and having the kids, having, you know, having fun, kids-oriented amenity here down by the community center, and of course, it's visible and all that sort of stuff. So there's definitely a ton of pros to it. But I think the biggest challenge is that the history of that land that makes it a little bit difficult to construct things that are for people to be active on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Heim.
Yep.
Very good. All right, no hands up, so I guess we can move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to the landscape and lighting districts, I'm going to go quickly through each of the districts. There are eighteen districts within the city. Two of the districts have an overall negative fund balance. But you'll see that there's an annual deficit spending in a lot of these, and that's just because we're doing the projects or we're purchasing landscape and equipment that we need to get done. So let me go through them, and we'll talk about the increases along the way. Most of the properties, we are allowed to increase by five percent on an annual basis, or I should say opt to five percent. So you'll see that some of them are, the ask is lower. And then some of the districts are allowed, we're allowed to increase by up to ten percent. So beginning with District One, Ranchwood, we have a net loss this year for sixty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars. But the overall ending fund balance is still healthy at one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. But we will be proposing an increase of five percent to that entity. Ranchwood projects include Ranchwood Park and Vineyards Medium for a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That average increase at about five percent is about eleven dollars and eighty-five cents per lot. Crest Hills is negative sixteen thousand dollars for the year, but they still have a healthy reserve of forty-three thousand. We will be asking for a five percent increase in that district as well. Projects there include storm station improvements of twenty thousand dollars and Crest Hills Park booster pump for thirty thousand dollars. Los Bannas Gardens is deficit spending by five hundred dollars, and we have a healthy reserve of thirty-three thousand. The increase there is ten thousand dollars. The projects that we have there are storm station improvements of twenty thousand dollars. Moving on to College Greens, we're deficit spending by fifty-eight thousand. The healthy fund balance of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three with a five percent increase. And I don't, oh, we are doing parking lot repair for sixty thousand dollars to College Green. Orchard Terrace has a net income of five thousand one hundred dollars with a healthy fund balance of twenty-nine thousand. We are asking for a five percent increase. There are no projects scheduled at this time. St. Francis is a loss of fifteen hundred dollars, a healthy fund balance of twenty-eight thousand with a three percent increase. No projects at this time. Valley Meadows is a ten thousand dollar loss with a thirteen thousand dollar fund balance, a five percent increase. No projects at this time. Jolene Manners is a thirty-three thousand dollar deficit spending, a forty-five thousand dollar reserve with a ten percent increase. And we are doing booster pump and median improvements at a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. The Los Bannas Creek Shopping Center has a loss of five thousand dollars with a fund balance of twenty-four thousand and an increase of three percent. And no projects planned at this time. Meadowlands, this is one of our negative funds. And we so far have increases annually by the cap, which is only five percent. They happen at loss of four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. We can't afford to do anything special in this district. The estimated fund balance is negative five hundred and thirty-one dollars, so we're trying to rebuild that up. What is positive here is that we have seen development in the area, which means that more people are paying into this fund. As more people pay into this fund, it will become healthier, and we will be able to do more regular items, just fixing up the district, but also special projects as well. Mission Estates is negative deficit spending by thirty-five thousand with a fund balance of twenty-eight thousand and a five percent increase asked. We are doing electrical pedestal for the storm station at thirteen thousand. And there is a shade sale going into Verona Park for a cost of thirty-eight thousand. Somerset Park has a net income of seventeen hundred dollars and a healthy fund balance with no planned projects. North Gate or Regency Park has a healthy fund balance of fifty-eight thousand with a ten percent increase. Again, no planned projects. Magnolia Grove, we're asking for a three percent increase with no planned projects. Senior Home Villages has a deficit spending of four thousand dollars. They have a fund balance of only five thousand. That is part of the reason for the increase at five percent. Stone Creek Villages has a net income of seventy-eight thousand. They do have a fund balance of two hundred and three thousand. And we are doing landscape improvements to that district at the cost of seventy thousand dollars. So we will be anywhere at that fund balance. The Railroad Corridor has a net income of fourteen hundred dollars with a balance of a hundred and one thousand, but we are asking for a slight increase of five percent. And then Talbot Park, this is our other unhealthy district. We are bringing in income, which is good. We did have a little bit of development in the area. The income coming in is twenty-one thousand. However, our fund balance is still at a negative loss. We are asking for the max increase there, which is ten percent. And with that new development coming in the area, that will help us get out of that negative fund balance. And also, I didn't mention that we did have sidewalk improvements at the railroad corridor budget. So our increases, our overall increases for the eighteen different districts range from three dollars all the way up to two hundred and ninety-four dollars with the average increase being thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents for residents in these districts.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do you have a hand up, Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Williams, can you go back to the Ranchwood area? What were the improvements that we were looking into on that one?
I'm sorry, what did you, which one?
The Ranchwood area.
Oh, so the Ranchwood area, we are doing Ranchwood Park and Vineyards Medium at a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, and does this include lighting or for some of this areas in these Ranchwood areas?
Well, so.
Or is this included in this? I'm not.
Yeah, I can touch on it if you'd like.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so there are two different projects. One's the Vineyards Medians, which we were trying to go out for a couple of years ago in COVID. Kind of stalled on that. So the medians, those medians that run along Vineyard Drive, there's technically two that also are running north-south on Stonewood, where Stonewood and Vineyards cross. But the majority of them are along vineyards, and we're trying to renovate those. Quite a few of them are in what I would consider pork edition. We want to get, you know, new trees, new landscape, new upgrades to those medians. The other project is, if you're familiar with Ranchwood Park, there where the Ranchwood building is, to the, it's to be the north side where there's the basketball court there. There's an area there that is just dirt around the basketball court, and so this would landscape that. We're looking at trying to provide bench and trees and a solar light as well into that area just to kind of provide some visibility at night into that park. Sometimes it's hard to see in the back corner of that, especially if, say, you're an officer driving by. Even if you pull on the parking lot, it can be difficult. So it's a very popular destination for teens, although it's that basketball court. And just aesthetically, it's something that would provide, you know, grass to, you know, have a picnic or a frisbee and trying to kind of complete that park here, even though it's thirty-something years old and all that. But those are the two projects.
And thank you, Ms. Heim.
Thank you.
So in addition to the special projects that Joe just discussed, but the regular budget, which is on two oh five for Ranchwood, does include things like sidewalk maintenance, street maintenance, the lights and lighting maintenance. So the general budget does. I just was pointing out more of the special projects that they have in the area. Okay, so just to summarize, again, there are eighteen districts within the city. Two of the districts are operating with a negative fund balance. One of the two districts are budgeted to deficit spend. Revenues are limited to that district, which means that we can't take district for one money and help pay the other one off. It's what we bring in, what is collected for a specific district can only be used in that specific district. And then signs of improvement are annual increases, which will be brought to you at the June second council meeting for council approval. And then again, development. So when we see increases in development, that's positive. If it's in the lighting and landscape district, then it's going to help better those areas. It'll bring in more revenues for the budget, allowing us to do more items. Okay, if there's any questions, I'll move on to the enterprise fund. The enterprise funds, there are four different enterprise funds, water, wastewater, solid waste and airport. These are business-like funds, so basically, what we are bringing into these funds has to be spent out. We can maintain fund balances, but they have to be allocated or associated with this, a special. be allocated or associated with this, a special project. So we have to have a plan for why we're building up our fund balances. Our beginning fund balance for water, which you can find water on page two hundred and seventy-seven of your workbook. Our beginning fund balance for water is twenty-six million dollars. We are bringing in seven point four million in revenues. We are expending out eight point one million with an anticipated ending fund balance of twenty-six million dollars. We do have a land purchase in here, which is for well number sixteen at a cost of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. There is a repair to water lines in the fairgrounds area for one point eight million dollars. Vehicles, we have a three-quarter ton utility truck for a cost of sixty thousand dollars. And specialized vehicles is a thirty-three thousand GVWR truck chassis at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Ms. Williams, if you could, that well purchased, how much land are we purchasing for that nine hundred thousand? Do you know?
I do not know that. I do not know the acreage of that. No, I'm sorry. I can get that number for you, though.
Can I have a complete, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to wastewater for sewer begins on page two eighty-seven of your budget book. We do also have a healthy reserve here. We have a beginning fund balance of thirteen point eight million. Revenues are coming in at seven point nine million. Expenditures are going out at nine point seven, and that's because of some of the large capital projects we're going to do, giving us the ending fund balance of twelve million dollars. We have been working on a land purchase for a Nance Storm Drain Basin. And then also we'll be working on one for a city, a central city sub-basin. And I don't have the acreage on those either, but I'd be happy to bring those back at the next meeting. We are working on storm drain improvements. There is a Pine Street Storm Line at a cost of approximately five hundred thousand dollars. And then the Central City Storm Drain improvements at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars. We're working on a master plan for Crest Hills Slip Station at three hundred and seventy-three thousand, and one sixty-five and one fifty-two sewer line repair at a hundred thousand dollar cost. And then specialized equipment and specialized vehicles include the purchase of cameras for inspecting the sewer lines that will cost us approximately seventy thousand dollars. Another GVWR truck chassis, half of that was paid out of water. The other half of that will be paid out of wastewater, and that, that half is seventy-five thousand. And then a backhoe for doing all these projects at a cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The airport fund is on page three oh five of your workbook. We do have a, a fund balance here, an ending fund balance of, at six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. There are professional services built into this budget. During the priority workshop, we talked about reevaluating the relocation of the airport. And so there are professional services built into here to help us get that revamped. And then there's costs related to airport improvements is for our improvement of runway, overlay of the runway. And then our equipment needs to include a blower attachment. And again, that's used to clean, clean the runway and make it safer for airplanes to land. Solid waste or garbage, that begins on page three oh nine of your workbook. The ending fund balance there is four point nine million dollars. We do have the landfill closure project built into this amount, and hopefully, I believe that everybody needs to sign off on that project to get it approved on how we would do a clean closure. That has been done, and we should be starting that project next year. The anticipated cost is three million dollars, which is a lot lower than we had originally anticipated. We are also purchasing a street sweeper, so the street sweepers are paid out of this fund, and that is anticipated to cost us three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Internal Service Funds, Internal Service Funds, that we do only have three of those. Those are funds that include fleet management, retiree health or OPEB, and IT services. And these are services that are provided citywide and get costed out, allocated in different manners throughout the budget. So to all the different departments we talked about, and some of them that we may have left off tonight, these items are budgeted, so we can see what we're spending, but then they're charged out to the different departments. So our Internal Services Funds include, as I mentioned, three different funds. Fleet Maintenance begins on page three twenty-five of your workbook. They have an annual budget, excuse me, of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And this is used to basically maintain the different vehicles that we have, not only police fleet, but fire fleet, cars at City Hall, IT vehicles, things like that. They, there is an increase to facility maintenance, and that's for storage containers for parts to be stored safely at the shop. And then also gasoline and oil has increased, obviously due to economic times, the increases in gas, and that affects what we're doing. The Information Technology or IT budget begins on page three twenty-nine. Their annual budget is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mostly, this is used for our IT contract and our internal staff. In addition to that, we do have an annual computer replacement program. This year, we're set to replace approximately twenty-five computers, whether they are desktops or laptops, that we have that list. And then network and server updates. So we have different servers that we maintain to run different programs throughout the city. So we are continuously upgrading those or replacing them if they are outdated. And so there's money included in that as well. Retirees, medical health, this begins on page three hundred and thirty-seven of your workbook, and this is for, this funds retired employee benefits, and it funds other post-employment benefits, which is determined, actuarially determined contributions. That means we send them out, and the actuary determines how much we have to pay. That amount is one point nine million dollars annually. And like I mentioned before, that is allocated throughout the different funds.
Excuse me, Son, Sonia there. That retirees' medical health, is that taken from, now we call the Internal Service Funds, but what are, is there a, are there multiple sources to pay that, or is there a single source?
So that is, that is paid dependent on what job the retiree had done when they were with the city. So if you were a police officer when you were with the city and you were paid out of the general fund, then your retiree benefits continue to be paid out of the general fund. If you're paid out of Measure P, then they continue to be paid out of Measure P. If you're Parks and Rec employee, it's paid out of that department. So it's state, you stay with where you were paid at when you worked.
All right. Thank you very much.
And that being said, I am finally done talking, unless anybody has any additional questions. I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Counsel, if anyone has any questions, go ahead and pop your hand up and see if we can address any, any lingering questions. It was quite a thorough presentation, very excellently done. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
So I guess I, I do actually have another comment. We do have, tonight, and Lucy was most likely going to bring this up, but I'll mention it, we were adjourning to a second workshop. And I, and that's just based on what council needs. If you don't feel that there's a need for a second workshop, we didn't make a lot of changes here tonight. If you want to have a second workshop and have specific questions for me, I'd be more than happy to handle the second workshop. And if you don't, we could move it, we could cancel the adjournment for tonight and move just to the June sixteenth meeting. And that's something for council to take into consideration.
Okay. So, Counsel, if you feel you, we, we need another workshop, go ahead and put your hand up and in the little, in the little hand, raise hand button there. Mr. Yamas? And anyone else feel we need another workshop? Okay. Mr. Yamas seems to be a lone soldier there. Sorry, lone Marine.
I would be more than happy to have.
I think it would be wise, I think it would be wise to hold that extra workshop, even if it's, even if it's not too terribly long, just to make sure all our council is content and happy and satisfied that we have covered and, and felt that they've had a chance to address all their concerns. And so I would go ahead and we'll keep that adjournment for the second workshop in, in the, in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms.
Mayor. City Manager Breezy has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Breezy. Go ahead. I missed it.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to offer counsel, and I think Sonia was alluding to it, if anyone would like to have a follow-up meeting personally with Sonia or myself, primarily Sonia, because she's the pro with this, we, we would certainly encourage you to do that. If that would help alleviate the need for a second meeting, we just send it out there as an offer. If the second meeting is what you want to do, we'll be ready to rock and roll at the adjourned time.
Okay. I, I go ahead, you know, I, I'd like to have a, that second meeting. I'd like, it doesn't have to be, it may not have to be very long or extensive, but let's make sure that all the council is comfortable with it. And so then, then we're good and solid before we go in. And that's going to be on the twenty-seventh is what that adjournment is for, which is next Thursday at four. So there, there is a, there is a, a DSL meeting, the successor agency has a meeting that afternoon at three. If I have to hand the gavel over, then I can do that, too, if it's not done in time. But so let's go ahead and, and plan for that. It's, I don't think it'll hurt to have that extra, that extra time, especially since we have new council members. I remember when I first got on council, there's, there's a great deal, great deal to, to sort and deal with. So we'll go ahead and, and do that. All right. Am I seeing any other hands? No? Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a suggestion that I'd like to throw out there for Councilmember Yamas. I had a Zoom meeting today with Sonia to ask questions that I had concerns about and to let her know what things that I was going to bring up today at the meeting. And so would Councilmember Yamas be available for a Zoom meeting with her to go over the concerns? And if, if they're not met in that meeting, then we can continue. If they are met, is, is there any way that the adjourned meeting can be set aside? And maybe there, there are questions that he has in mind that need to be legitimately brought up to the council. But I think, you know, as a new person on the board, and certainly, I've been here eight years, and this Zoom meeting that I had today opened up a, a lot of information for me to be able to ask, ask that I couldn't do as a council member because it would take up too much meeting time to do. So I kind of like the idea to have staff availability for us there to have those Zoom meetings and to plan and have our questions prepared and to go over anything that we have concerns about and to ask questions for clarity. So I, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. I, I don't know if he's interested in that right now, or if there's something else that he would like to see brought back. Because certainly, you know, he may have questions in mind about the budget based on even some things that we talked about tonight. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there as a suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and keep the adjourned meeting on the books. We can cancel it, and if Mr. Yamas is comfortable with that. Either way, it's better to, better to go ahead and put it on the books so we can go ahead and hold it if we need it. This can always be canceled. So, very, very good. Thank you. As always, excellent discussions. And we're, whenever you're talking money, it's, essentially everything we do, all the things we want to see done, cost money. And it all comes down to Ms. Williams' office. She has to figure out what we can afford and what we can't. And we very much appreciate it.
May I finally speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
Not quite sure how we would accomplish a cancellation without getting the city council back together to concur on that, unless you want to delegate that decision to the city manager. So once you, once you adjourn and we post that, basically posted, and I'm not sure who would have the authority to decide that we're not going to have that meeting.
Okay. Can we, do we, can we give that authority to the city manager?
I think you can delegate it to the city manager to cancel the meeting if, in his opinion, it's not necessary. I'm not quite sure, listening to this discussion, what the criteria for determining whether or not it's necessary would, would be.
Okay. I think it would be essentially up to Mr. Yamas, and on whether we would need to cancel it, because it's his, it's, it's his desire that we, we hold another workshop. And so if he felt between now and then that we didn't need that workshop, then if we had the, the ability to cancel it, I think would be great, if we have that flexibility. So in order to have that flexibility, we would need to delegate that to the city manager. Is that correct?
I think that's one of the ways you can accomplish that.
And so in the motion to adjourn, we would include that.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll plan for that. I'll make my notes. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to drag this on, but with Bill's comment, I was always taught that if we make a request, do we have to state what the request is for? Or do, or can we just make a blanket request? And I'm not trying to put, you know, make it difficult, because I, I don't know why we're bringing it back. And, and I know Mr. Yamas wants to bring it back, but are we required to give a reason why we won't bring it back?
Mr. Vaughn?
Well, certainly, you could vote not to adjourn this meeting and discuss the purpose of having the adjourned meeting. I think it was put on the agenda, because it was anticipated that you might want a second workshop, but it would take a majority vote of the council to adjourn to the new date and time at the end of this meeting. And that's when you would discuss what it is you're talking about. I'm not sure what Mr. Yamas, Mr. Yamas was the only one that wanted to actually adjourn to that date. So if that's the way the votes stand, stood, you'd have a four to one consensus not to adjourn to that date. So I, I think either you can discuss it now, or you can discuss it at the time that the motion for adjournment comes up at the end of this meeting as to.
It's, it's not the process. It's, what I've always been taught is that if, if you'd like to bring something back, then state your reason why you want to bring it back. Because right now, I'm not, I'm not clear. We're going to bring something back, but no one said, let's bring it back because I want more clarification in this department, that department, or whatever. And, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm going. I, I need some clarity on why we're bringing it back.
Okay. So I wasn't involved in the decision to adjourn to a second workshop, so maybe we should start there with what the purpose of the second workshop was going to be. And then you can discuss it from there as to whether that's necessary or not at this point.
And, and, and again, every council member needs to have their fair opportunity to do or make a request. And I, and I don't want to deny anybody's request. I just don't know what I'm, what I'm, what the request is, other than to bring it back. So if we bring it back, what is the staff going to bring back to us? That, that's the only thing I'm asking clarification on for Mr. Yamas, is that if there's something particular in the budget or some particular category or concern that he has, I've always been taught that we need to state what our concern is to justify why we want to bring something back.
And don't lose sight of the fact that there will be another hearing on the budget in addition to a potential second workshop.
So that would be. So that would be that would be the final hearing.
Yeah, there there will be a time at that point to discuss the budget.
Okay, well, I'll I'll just, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, and it's just a super thought. I'm not trying to change anybody's mind. I I guess I was just curious as to why it's being brought back, and there there wasn't an indication as to why we're bringing it back. What are we going to be reviewing when it comes back? So I'll I'll yield the floor back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas, would you like to comment?
Well, it was my understanding that it's already on the calendar, so it's not something that I'm requesting. It's just we're going to keep that calendar date, so it's not a new request. So maybe that clarifies a little bit. Secondly. I will be speaking and hopefully making a meeting with Mrs. Williams, hopefully Monday or Tuesday, to have some clarification on some items. And I was wondering if I could be allowed that time to do that.
Okay, so you'll be meeting with Ms. Williams next week. Do you feel it would be necessary? Because we put it on, we did put it on with with the option, and it it notes are adjourned to this date if a second workshop is needed and wanted. Do you feel that your conversation with Ms. Williams then would need would need to be brought back to full council? If so, then I I would I would, you know, recommend that we can keep it on there. If you feel that it's something that could be done just with her with her and staff, then we could bring it back at the final hearing, then we would recommend not to have that extra workshop.
That's absolutely fine, Mr. Mayor. Again, if any council member feels strongly, again, like Mr. Vaughn stated, you can just easily vote and declare your your position on it, but I I don't think that that along back and forth what's necessary on this subject. But sure, I I think that the conversation with Mr. Williams will probably satisfy anything, and and I think would probably negate the necessity of of the meeting on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll we'll keep that in mind when we get to the adjournment point. Thank you so much. I want every council member to be heard. I think this council is is one of it's highly dedicated and highly interested in doing the very best job we can. And my job as mayor, I've said it before, is to make sure that every voice in this council is heard because you represent citizens of Los Banas and their voices. And that way we get the best the best practice, the best decisions with with all the greatest input from all all these very dedicated people. So thank you very much. And with that, then we'll close this item and move to item nine, which is the COVID-19 status update. Mr. Acting City Manager Breezy.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council. Thank you. Just a regular update regarding COVID. If you look at the stats, and I will be happy to provide this slide to you after the meeting regards to COVID-related information of the last two-week period. So this is an update from our our May 5, 2021 meeting. In California statistics, you'll see that the cases went up by about 24,000. And California, the number of deaths went up just under 1,000, which is a good thing. That's never a good thing. Let me rephrase that, but it's the fact that these numbers seem to be going down. That's a good thing, but people passing away is not. If you go down on the left column, just to the Merced County statistics, strike that when you back up. If you go down on the right side, you'll see where it talks about how it the type of data it takes us to get to the orange tier. Currently, we're one of about nine counties in the state of California who are still in the red tier. We moved to the red tier back in mid-April from the purple tier, which was a good move. I think actually the signs and the numbers are encouraging. The data is going to hopefully take us in the next week or two down to the orange tier, which is even less restrictive. I'll show you where and and the those to get to the orange tier, you have to have daily case rate must average between 2 and 5.9. If you look over in that left column, the Merced County statistics says it's at 4.2 per 100,000 residents. Now, that's a new number that meets that daily case range from the previous council meeting on the 5th, where we had an 8.7 for 100,000 resident daily case rate. The other statistic requirement is the positivity rate must average between 2 and 4.9. And currently, we sit at 2.2, and we were in this range last week. So we got into this range this week with or in the last two weeks on our daily cases, the daily case rate, and we were already in this range in the positivity rate. So all signs are positive. Everything is moving in the right direction. If you look on that left side for the Merced County statistics, a little bit further, you have active hospitalizations are down from 13 last meeting to six this meeting, excuse me, this week. Regional ICU capacity, that's the only number that went up. We went up from 20, excuse me, we went down from 24.1 to 22.8. And we had a few more deaths, nine of them in total from our last meeting. If you go down to the very bottom on the right column, the vaccination information, in California has a population of about 35 million people. And I'm sorry, we have administered about 35 million vaccine doses, single doses. That's up about 5 million from last year. We have a total population of about 39 million. That last statistic down at the bottom, Merced County has administered approximately 151,000, and that's up quite a significant number, if you ask me, about 16,000 people from our two-week period, our two weeks ago. Our population still sits at about 284,000. So we're at or above 50% of our population has received at least one dose, which I guess if you do the statistics and the math a little bit deeper, you could say on average that we have about 25% of our residents have been fully vaccinated, just using those numbers in a general vague kind of way. So those there are those numbers in regards to our our COVID statistics. Things are still going well on the on the city side as it relates to COVID. We're still taking active measures to stay safe. We're going to be bringing back to you on June 2nd the changes in regards to hopefully going back to live meetings in either late June or early July in the council chambers. We've got some issues that we'll address with you regarding times of the meeting, June 2nd meeting. And I'm pleased to announce, and I'll do it now as opposed to my city manager comments in in number 11, because it is COVID-related, that the fire department is partnering with Golden Valley to add a surge to our COVID vaccination attempts in the Los Banas area. Golden Valley seemed very supportive and excited to partner with the city of Los Banas to bring up these pop pop-up type events where we vaccinate our local residents, put some fire trucks out there at the Golden Valley site or another site if that's where we choose to go. We're talking about perhaps giving away some free gifts to the first 50 to 100 individuals. We're still working that out, but we hope to bring that to the residents of our community in less than the next 30 days. So that's a good thing. We're hoping the next two weeks, if we can pull it off. But we're excited to bring that to the community. I was vaccinated months ago. So far, I'm doing okay. I wish it would have helped me lose a little weight, but it didn't. We'll keep working on it. Other than that, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for the time. That is all I have for our COVID update, unless you have any questions.
Okay, well, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Breezy regarding the COVID-19 update? All right, seeing no hands raised. We will move on to item 10, which is advisement of public notices, and we have two reports for which we will go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the first item is a cottage food operation permit for Maggie Sanders. This is for the allowance of low-risk food to be made and sold from the home. This is a law that was passed through the state of California, which requires cities to allow these types of uses within the residential zoning district. So this does this particular permit does follow within accordance of our ordinance. The second is for a conditional use permit for courtyard mimosas. They are located within the Conti Plaza, which is the Baskin Robbins Shopping Center. They're an existing restaurant, and they are requesting to intensify their existing Type 41 alcohol license, which is for on-sale beer and wine. They're requesting to increase, intensify that use to a Type 47, which is general alcohol. Both of these items will be heard at a public hearing with the Planning Commission on Wednesday, May 26 at 5:30 PM via Zoom, and the link will be posted on the agenda, which if it hasn't already come out today, it'll be coming out shortly tomorrow. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 11. We'll go back to Acting City Manager Breezy for the city manager's report.
Thank you again. Just a couple things on a personal level. My daughter's a senior. She'll be graduating in a month or so. Tonight's her last volleyball game in the city series. She's a great kid. I hope she flips the pants off of the opponents in a nice way, but I just want to say congratulations to my daughter. There was one other topic that I wanted to discuss, and it has slipped my mind, so I will leave it for the next meeting. As always, council members, mayor, if you have any questions about anything, I encourage you to text me, call me, whatever you need, email me. Staff would be happy to take care of whatever issues you have, and I just remembered what it was. I want to take a second to thank Sonia for the presentation tonight. Her and I walked through it yesterday. That's a lot of information to provide to you all about a lot of stuff that the city does. I encourage you to come speak to us about it because I'm excited. I know Sonia is. She might not be excited at the moment after that long presentation, but she's excited to present this budget and as are the rest of the staff. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now come to my report on MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure B. I don't have anything particular on Measure B. I do have MCAG. We had the big one voice trip a couple of weeks ago, and we spoke with federal national staffers of senators and congressmen, congressmen, congressmen. There's a lot of money coming down. A lot of available money for expansion of broadband and vaccinations. And the broadband that broadband seems to be like the new electricity of as electricity was in the 1930s, broadband is now. So there's a lot of money for that. Also, most of the information we get, most of the money available is matching funds. And so we're going to need to find sources for matching funds, whether it be, and we can partner with nonprofits for that. We very much welcome nonprofits to join us in pursuing these funds. Everything from National Endowment of the Arts to transportation. And of course, our Measure V helps us in that transportation money because it makes us self-help accounting. Once again, most of the money is matching, so we have to come up with something and start the ball rolling. MCAG has expanded the bus. They have the micro transit system, and you can go to their website. And 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 there's all kinds of information about that. The, let me see if I I had, there it is. I there's a big, long page. If you go to Merced County Bus, Google the micro bus, and you get all the information there. Passengers can can ride for a dollar fares are $1.50 per ride. Seniors, veterans, and ADA passengers pay discounted rate of 75 cents. All fares include free transfers to the Los Banas mixed route for those passengers looking to travel between the West Side communities or to Merced. So it's called the micro bus. It's working all the way up and down the West Side. So our partners over there at MCAG are really heard us, listen to us. And they will be here in June. They're going to do a little presentation for us at the June 2nd meeting. Peninsula Clean Energy has announced that we we haven't announced it yet. We're going to wait until they announce it at the PCD Board meeting, but they have hired a representative for Los Banas to connect the Los Banas citizens to Peninsula Clean Energy and help answer questions and for the rollout. And also a community citizens advisory committee member. We had an applicant from Los Banas, and so after they're announced at the board meeting, we'll announce them here at the council meeting. The reason for the state revenues, notice that the state's taken in a lot more money, I understand, is because of capital gains. All the British property increases and the stock market increases. Capital gains tax really created a windfall for the state. And so on those items, those are the last I have. And at that, I'll move on to our council member reports, and we'll go to Mayor Protem Lewis.
Ms. Lewis, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I was trying to pull up an email from the San Joaquin Quality, the air, the Air Board for San Joaquin Valley. There have been, I think I talked about grants that have been monies from the federal government for grants for replacement of fire, your your gas, your wood burning fireplaces. I think right now there's up to $3,000 that is being allowed to replace your wood burning fireplaces through the the Air Quality Board. So those funds are available now. Because by 2025, it looks like wood burning is going to be out in California, so I would recommend that any resident of Los Banals take advantage of that money that's out there. I will forward the information to our staff so they can post it on our website to apply for those funds. And any other funds that are out there. There are also funds to replace your your gas lawnmower, your edger with battery operating or electric. So there's a push and a move in California, as we all know, to turn it green. And so if the money is available to you, I would recommend you take advantage of it rather than you just having to toss out what you have now and have to purchase it on your own. Since there are there are funds available to help you purchase those new items. On another hand. There is talk. It's not anything, you know, that's solidified at this point about California looking at moving from fireworks shows to some sort of light fireworks show. So there's discussion about that, and I just want our city to have a heads up on that, that that might be something in another year that might be coming down to the cities within our state of California. Some of these things may be glimmer, you know, looking grim to us. And some of the things I agree and don't agree with, but certainly I thought I would continue to pass this information on to you. And especially with wood burning being a no-go by the year 2025. Whatever funds are available out there, please take advantage of it. The email that we received, it looks like multiple residents in Fresno have already taken advantage of that and some residents in Los Banals. So we need to get the word out word out for the older homes that have wood burning stoves, wood burning fireplaces for you to be able to get the $3,000 to replace that with a gas insert or an electric insert in your firebox. And that's my report this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. There's a lot of money available when you if you know where to chase it. When people wonder where their tax dollars are going, why they're paying so much in taxes, that's why. And so unfortunately, we have to go chasing it to bring it back home. So, thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, no report, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Thank you. And Mr. Lambert?
First, I'd like to say thank you, Sonia, for a, a great presentation. But, Ms. Mayor, I would, I would like to, we're still having some issues out at the dog park. And I would like to have this brought to the next agenda if possible, with a few issues I'd like to have brought to the other council. Thank you.
Okay, we'll make that a council member agenda request. Staff can bring back, bring that back to us. Talk to you and how they want to, how you want the, talk to staff and decide how you, how you want that item to, to, to appear. Very nice, very good. Now, we got to make sure we take care of our animals in our animal shelter. And that's it from Mr. Lambert this evening? Thank you. And from me, I had, I want to, I live over in College Dreams area, and we have a nice new sign on our building there. And they repainted the building. We know it's college dreams. And it looks great. Also, met with the pickleball folks here in town. We have a pickleball USA ambassadors here in town. And apparently, this is a very, this sport is growing in popularity. And the schools have it too. So who knows, maybe we can expand some recreational opportunities there and have some social events and fun things with the pickleball. And finally, there is a group called, an organization called 106. And they are partnering up with a group called We Hope. And they're going to be bringing quality meals and a shower and laundry trailer to town tomorrow, starting at 9:00 AM. It'll be at the Salvation Army building. And so that's at 1231 Fourth Street. And you can look that up online, 106, T-D-N-S-I-X. And We Hope, 106 was brought to me by one of my graduates from 20 years ago, Bobby Goromeish. And he told me about this organization. So we're partnering up with the city of Los Banas as well because we're going to be filling up some water trucks so that we can provide these services for the lost portion. I'm very pleased to see this sort of thing happen in our town because Los Banas takes care of its people. That's what we're known for. All right. That, I believe, is it from my, my report. Finally, now we'll go into closed session. And there were two items. One is item A, which is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, section 54957. Dot six, agency-designated representatives, Acting City Manager Breezy, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banas Police Officers Association, LBPRA, Los Banas Police Sergeants Association, LBPSA, Los Banas Firefighters Association, LFFA, Los Banas Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, Los Banas Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local 1/AFSCME, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And item B in the closed session will be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.9. One potential case. And we will, we will report on those when we come out. Ms. Maloney, would we like to do the adjournment motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give this over to Councilmember Yamas if he would like to make the motion of whether we want to adjourn to the meeting or not.
No, we don't. Not to adjourn to the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, to the closed session?
No, no, to the, to, that's part of the meeting for the extra workshop next week.
Ah, yes, sir, no. I believe the meetings with the senior should be sufficient.
Okay, very good. So the chair will not entertain a motion to adjourn to 4:00 PM Thursday, May 27. So therefore, we will report out at the end of the closed session. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Okay, we have returned from closed session. And there is no reportable action. Business is ended. Meeting is adjourned at 8:53, 8:53 PM. Can't even read that along clock anymore. All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.